You good? Couple of minutes, we have some technical difficulties. So it is recording? So we'll record it, we'll record it and play it. Gotcha. Okay. Alright, so you're ready to go? I'll just make an announcement when we do. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. In accordance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of July 21st, 2025 was published in the Courier-News and Star Ledger and placed on the Borough's website and bulletin board. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of the meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher.
Here.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Andrew Conti.
Here.
Glenn Deney.
Here.
Randy Pitts is excused this evening. Gina Stravic.
Here.
Roger Verum.
Here.
Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just for edification for those that will be watching the meeting after tonight, we are having some, some technical issues. We are recording, so we are recording live and we will push that broadcast out as soon as we can. We're having a little difficulty connecting to YouTube, so, but it is recording, so everybody will have an opportunity to see this. Motion for approval of the minutes of July 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verum.
Yes.
Okay, we have no departmental reports or notices. Number six, we have a presentation from the folks from North Bridge Properties, which is the property on the corner of East Main Street and Veterans Memorial Drive. I'll ask their attorney to come up and just give us an overview. This is a project that started under the previous administration. Mayor Sullivan's in the audience as well, and over the course of the last three years or so, there's been a number of iterations, comments, suggestions, and different developments, development ideas that the North Bridge Properties has brought forward to address those concerns. So, turn it over to you.
Good evening, members of the Borough Council. My name's Michael O'Gronek. I'm an attorney at Savo Shawk Law Firm here in Somerville. I'm here on behalf of Gateway East Somerville LLC. We're here tonight to just go, to give you a presentation on the concept plan for the current iteration of this project. It's a seven, seven separate lot compilation of properties. It's taken many years to get all these properties together. Properties total about 3.811 acres, and this plan proposes vacating Meadow Street and essentially demolishing all those buildings in that area, the existing structures, and consolidation of the lots into one lot. In total, this concept plan proposes 15,000 square feet of use on the first floor, that would be a commercial type uses, and a construction of 284 residential units along with, what's the current space? 243. And associated parking spaces and other improvements, including a swimming pool, terrace, amenities, and recreational rooms. This concept plan is a result of years of work, first to assemble the necessary acreage, and second to obtain the DEP approvals for a property that has a long history of flooding, and lastly, to address the contaminated related to the historic municipal landfill located on northern portion of the site. With me tonight, I have Matthew Caruso on behalf of the applicant to explain the project in a little more detail and to give a history of where, where it started and where it is today.
Thank you.
Testing.
Got it.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Caruso. I'm a representative of the sponsorship entity. We're excited to be here tonight to present the project that Mr. O'Gronek had just prefaced. So I thought we'd run through a brief presentation of the slides and materials presented and then open this up for question, comment, and discussion. So, just going into the presentation, a quick overview, as Mayor Gallagher had mentioned, we've been working on this project for the better part of three-plus years with the redevelopment committee, and that's through two administration changes. We've addressed feedback as well from the planning board, both in the June of 2024 conceptual hearing and again, two weeks ago, that received favorable support and feedback. So there was a number of changes that we've made over the last six to 12 months for the project that really centered around addressing some main concerns. First being safety and emergency service access to the site, particularly in the event of a flood, given this is a flood-prone area. Making sure that existing structures are removed from a floodplain and no parking is in the floodplain. We've also obtained DEP permits and DEP approval for this site plan as presented. We've reduced bulk, height, and density of the project per feedback of the board. We've also updated architectural designs to really capture an identifiable gateway concept that the project is named after, because this would be the extension of East Main Street. And then lastly, we've gotten ahead of identifying ways to safely plan EV chargers, at least at this preliminary stage, understanding that, you know, it is a current concern of the town that we're trying to get ahead of. So with that said, I'll kind of go into the slides. Slides three through five of this packet and slide three here detail what we were able to do to improve safety access to the site. So we actually contracted the acquisition of an additional parcel for this site plan, hashed and read on the screen in page three in front of you. So this is 37 Hamilton Street, and what it does that you can actually see a little bit better on page four is it sits higher into the hill towards Hamilton Street and sits at the back-left portion of our site where ingress and egress is planned. So the addition of this parcel is a major improvement because what it does is it actually raises the high-point entry into the site, 10 feet above the DEP-approved regulation, and that's also eight feet above what we previously had planned for the project. It's a major improvement, and what it does is it unequivocally allows unimpeded access to and from the site in the event of an emergency flood. We propose to dedicate this parcel solely for the use of emergency service management. Given this is a flood-prone area of town, this is a significant mitigation to that concern. Also, just reiterate, the site is fully approved by the DEP with a flood hazard permit. Redevelopment here will actually remove existing structures from the floodplain and improve flood storage capacity. Additionally, redevelopment here will mitigate or remediate historical fill that sits on site, partly of which, you know, date back to Somerville's municipal use of the site as a, as a waste dump, but, you know, it's good to clean up this area through redevelopment. Page five just gives you a bird's eye view of what I just explained with the addition of the parcel. Moving on to pages six and seven, so what we've done on these two pages is we've provided a before and after showing how we improved really the visuals of the building, reducing the height and the bulk and the density. Arguably, on page six is, is one of the most important viewpoints, which is looking up towards Main Street at the corner of Veterans Memorial and East Main. So, we were really able to soften this view by doing a few main things. To start, we did reduce unit count from 284 units to the currently proposed 243. We were able to accomplish that by removing an entire story from the building. So the building height was reduced from five stories to four, which you can see in the after picture on the bottom. In addition to that, we were actually able to replan residential units into places that were previously exposed parking elements, which frankly were a little bit of an eyesore compared to what we updated it to, which is a residential, front-facing facade, again giving that warm and welcome appearance as you come into East Main. Lastly, and maybe my favorite addition is, we've created what we're calling a cornerstone architectural element. This cornerstone that you can see on the bottom in the redesign really creates an identifiable gateway piece that is intended to be here. We think it signifies really a landmark, showing the entrance and, the entrance and frankly, the extension into downtown Main Street as Somerville always intended it to be in the redevelopment plan. It looks great, you know, we're excited to include these architectural elements. On page seven, I go into a little more detail, or we go into a little more detail on the backside of the property. So this is the viewpoint from Veterans Memorial, the back right. Again, you can see in the before and after, we've reduced height and we've shifted units into what used to be exposed parking elements. This really softens the appeal of it, and in the corner, on the ground in that grassy area, we've added park elements, you know, foliage, benches, things to really publicly activate the space to make it, again, softer in appearance. Just going forward to pages eight and nine, so we did make attempts to get ahead of EV charging concerns. I think the, the one advantage of this project as planned and as shown is there's a two-story parking garage, which means that both of those levels are separated by fire-rated concrete slabs. We're able to actually use then and get ahead of this, the lower level to almost, to specifically target EV charging, and the advantage to this that you can see on page nine as well is that you do not place any EV charging in this scenario underneath any residential space, which is important for safety because you don't want any of those fires underneath residents. In addition to that, it's close to open-air parking elements that are accessible from fire ladders if needed, that you can get into the space. And lastly, we've, we've targeted areas that are away from the commercial space on a horizontal perspective and also away from other residential spaces. And just moving forward, we have, we have presented just a conceptual floor plan of what this could look like from a bird's eye view. It will be amenitized space, we think that's important in this market, building a community. So amenities in the middle, there will be a deck with just activation, whether that's grills or lounge areas or pool. We think it would be fantastic product, product for this market. Again, on page 11, we just have another rendering concept looking down from Main Street of how the building would appear when you're looking east, almost at the corner of the courthouse from this perspective. I do want to mention one thing that's actually not in these renderings or plans, but we've also been working with the redevelopment committee and Colin Driver, and we're proud to have dedicated now a portion of the ground floor space here at this project for the use of Performing Arts Center and the implementation of that for the township, or the Borough of Somerville. We think it's a fantastic use for the project, and frankly, a creative use compared to a lot of the retail space that's been planned elsewhere in town that has struggled to absorb at times. We think the town needs this, and it's a, it's a great addition that can make this a community-centric project and not just another multifamily building. That said, we have made one additional change within the last two weeks, a patriotic change, I should say, at the, at the suggestion of Mayor Gallagher, but we've added a beautiful shining American flag up onto the corner of the property. You know, everything aside, what I think this symbolizes is, this, this really is the flagship property that has come before Somerville as a planning board in the last several decades, and I think, once effectuated, this will be the flagship entrance into East Main Street and really accomplish the goals and vision of redevelopment planning in this town that have been around for the better part of half a century. So we're excited to continue to work through this project, and I'm excited to hear everybody's feedback tonight. Thank you.
Great, that's, I think, a very good, concise presentation. This is a concept presentation, so just so everybody understands, it's a, it's kind of a first blush at, at what most likely would be brought before the planning board for ultimate site plan review. Questions, concerns, comments from council?
Questions and comments? Comments, thank you for revising your plan. I was not in favor of this project. Severe flood issues, I think, really deter its optimal location, but I'm glad that you are seeing some of that and making some emergency plans for the property. The question I have is, what, what will be the build-out on the property? What percent, building versus what percent open space on the 3.18 acres?
I would like to just refer to Jack, our architect. I don't know, know the exact answer to the technical details, but maybe, Jack, you can fill in? Jack or Craig?
Yeah, I, I don't know the open space calculations at this point.
Okay, I look forward to hearing from that in the future. Second thing, we call it the gateway. Coming from the Environmental Commission, we envision the gateway to Somerville as being very green. If you look at some of those slides that you showed up there before, it is very barren, East Main Street. We've, we've been trying to get grants to, to plant trees there, and personally, and I think I speak on behalf of the Environmental Commission, if not a, a lot, a good portion of the community, we'd love to see you donate to town some trees, good-sized trees, to put along East Main Street, to, to make that flagship and a gateway really recognizable. We've talked about Environmental Commission, our vision is especially cherry trees, alternate it maybe with red blaze trees that would make a really beautiful effect when you come in town in spring and in fall. So if that could be something you look at, I, I, I think it would really go far in terms of visuals. The other question I have is the art center space. What, what do you anticipate being the arrangement? I'm not clear what you mean. You're going to build space? Is someone going to rent it? Are you expecting the town to operate it? What, what's the vision here?
I, I think the answer to that is, there's still a lot of details to be worked out, which we look forward to working out. We, everything starts with an idea and a concept, and that's where we've started. We know that there's a large portion of space here, and we know that the township is in need of a public use center like a performing arts center, and this is the opportunity to do so. So, we know the what, it's just a matter of working through the how, like it is with any planning process, whether that's public incentive or, you know, state-funded grants, it's something that we're going to continue to look into, and I've already started, you know, broaching the topic with Colin Driver in the town planning and, and implementation of this.
Thank you. I, I think the, the discussion needs to go beyond Colin and, and get some community committees involved as well. I think it's really important, these, these community centers, community arts centers is definitely was on the, the agenda when we, we did visioning project for the police station and what we're going to put there. So the town wants that, but I think the struggle financially is how do you support that? So I think that's what we have to figure out.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments? Questions?
Hi. So I've been part of this process on the redevelopment committee, and I want to say that I am, one of the things to point out that you mentioned as well, though, the softening that back edge with the greenery, I think, has, has been, you know, is a big addition and hopefully provide some more flood storage in that area as well. I would agree with Gina, adding some of those softer edges to the front might help as well, and, and I was trying to find, and I know this is like little things, but like the access at that awesome gateway, I don't see it. I see I have to walk partway up the street to then get up the steps as opposed to that cool corner. I don't see a way to get in there. So, just something to think about as far as like, as a gateway welcoming, a way to, to utilize that as a way to get in as well would be, I think, pretty cool.
Certainly, yeah, we can definitely look at that.
Are you looking for a red carpet one?
I would second that opinion, though. It'd be nice not to have our gateway center be welcoming to a brick wall right there. It'd be nice to have some type of entrance or stairwell, stairs there to get inside. I do have some questions, though, about your design. You pointed out where your electric vehicle charging stations would be on the first floor. Could you talk more about the decision that you went through in order to get to that point?
Yeah, so, just to reiterate that, there's a two-level parking garage, and those parking garages are going to be, or parking levels are going to be separated by fire-rated concrete slabs. So the real goal of this, in, in trying to preliminarily find places to put the EV chargers, is keep them away from residents and keep them away from commercial space for safety, because if there is a fire, the last place you want it to be is near people. That said, when you go to the lower level, what's sitting above you is just another level of concrete, fire-rated, and parking above, so it's not below any residential. And although it might have been a little tough to see in the rendering, on the left side of the site, and perhaps I can actually just go into the photo. If you look at this photo, towards the left side of the photo, you can see the two-story parking garage. That extends around the other side of the building, so it creates open-air elements where it's not enclosed, so if there was a fire, you could access it with a ladder. We tried to target areas closer to that open air and again, on the lower level, because it's away from usable space. That was the thought process behind it.
Is it, in your experts' opinions, easier to get the fire apparatuses and hoses to electric vehicle fires on a first floor than it would be on other floors?
We would have to consult the fire department, just from standpoint of trying to plan this conceptually. I guess I figured lower height is a better thing to access the fire if you had to fight it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Any others?
Yeah, actually, so when this concept was first presented to the previous administration, there was a lot of concern about safety and the flooding and ability to get the emergency response people to the residents who are going to be there. So my question is, for all the firefighters in the back, do you feel better about this version? Do you feel that it's safer?
I, I don't know that we can put them on the spot like that. That's, that's, I don't think that's a fair question. They don't have site plans, they don't have...
I mean, that's my, that's, so that's still, you know, because they're the experts, so that's, that's, that's my only question. So I guess I can't have that answer right now.
Well, that will come, that answer will come, absolutely.
Right, okay.
Any others? So I, I guess I'll, I'll hit cleanup here. A few things. One, I think the, the team has listened over the course of many years to the concerns that a lot of folks had, both at the planning board, at the council level, and that spans, as was stated earlier, two administrations, and I think over the course of time, you've managed to put together a project that, that is a gateway, that I think took, took and addressed a lot of the concerns that folks had. It's a very difficult site. It's the entryway to downtown Somerville, and what you've managed to do is to assemble seven parcels, most of which are rundown, abandoned, graffiti, broken-out windows, just, they're not good. It's not a gateway to Somerville. And to have the ability over the course of a number of, because I'm, I'm sure you worked on those agreements prior to those, to beginning the discussions with the borough, so this is probably a four-year project to reach tonight, roughly. I don't know that anybody else has had that ability to do that. It's also an area that has seen two redevelopment plans, two different redevelopment plans, and there is a redevelopment plan in place, and that was your guiding principle to crafting what we see here today. I think the changes you've made put the building more in scale. It's taken it down a complete level. It's not a, you know, this large edifice. It fits in better with town as, as it terraces up, because you're coming, if, if you're coming from, from the east traveling west, the town terraces up, and this fits in a better scale. You've addressed the floodplain issues. I want to make it clear that there is no parking, there is no residential, there is nothing down below on that lowest level. It's, it's empty space. It's pedestals for the entire building. I think that's something that people have to be aware of. One of the critical concerns that a lot of folks had was emergency services access, and that's something that has been shared with all of you at the redevelopment level, at the planning board level, and, and I think again, here tonight, that having the ability to address Teresa's question, having the ability for our firefighters, our emergency responders, squad, police, to have access to the, to that building is critical. to have access to the, to that building is critical, it's paramount, and it's required. And, and I think you've taken great strides to address that as well. Our fire department and our squad are volunteers. And their safety is paramount in anything we do. It's not to say the PD is in, is in mind for safety as well. But, but these are our friends, our neighbors, and we need to make sure that they're safe. And, and I think your steps are showing the, you're reflecting the concern that we have, which I think is great. Your bulk, your density, your height, you've addressed all of those concerns from day one. And, and some of those concerns were shifting. As you would bring in a concept, it would raise other issues. And, and you had the ability not to take offense, but to understand. And I think that's, that's, that's a very good thing to do. One thing that folks did not touch on, which I will touch on, is the affordable housing. And you've already stated that you will comply with the borough's affordable housing.
Yeah, our messaging remains consistent. We're committed to working with the borough to address affordability.
Good. And then the performing arts center, having that public use. As you say, it's a concept. And we finally have a project that is willing to contemplate that in the project. And, and I think that is a huge step. As you say, you're willing on the concept, the devil's in the details, and we'll work those out. That's part of what we do. That's part of those negotiations that go on, both at this table, at the planning board, and the redevelopment committee. And I'm confident that we can come up with something that satisfies all. Because I think it's very important for this community to have that space. It's something that folks have been asking for, for a long time. And we have folks at the table who want to do just that. And that's big stuff. That doesn't come along every day. And, and, and I think that's very important. You're also taking property that's contaminated. And, and you're cleaning it up. So, you know, and this is historic fill. That's, that's contamination that goes back decades and decades and decades. You know, one of our charges is, in redevelopment, is to clean up those types of properties. In that area of town, in the Veterans Memorial, the eastern section, there were a number of properties that were landfills, that were different types of businesses that generated very bad stuff. Well, now we have a project that will clean up all of that area. And, and I think that's great. And, and again, you've softened the look. You've taken what was a very angular, harder look, oh, sorry, and, and you've softened it a bit, and, and made it that gateway, and made it something that's very pleasing to look at. And I do appreciate the fact that you put the American flag on the top as a gateway. I love that. I just think that it's just a little, you know, little dollop on the top. I think that's great. So I think you've done a very good job. I thank you for coming in and presenting. And, and then there's some work to be done. So thank you very much. We appreciate your time, your effort, and hopefully your investment in our Somerville. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You don't have to stay.
Mayor, before you move on, the first, the first 10 minutes of the presentation was recorded. And while, while the presentation was going on, I was getting some help technically. 10 minutes in, the recording went live. But we do have a recording, so I spoke to the director of communications. She's going to put it all together. So the entire, in addition to the stuff that went live, to the stuff that was recorded, will be, get put together in one unit tomorrow on the website.
It will be one meeting, yeah.
Yeah. So as long as folks refresh their location, they would have got the meeting live in about 10, in the first 10 minutes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. All right, committee reports. Andrew?
Historic advisory committee didn't meet this month, but there will be a roundtable coming up on August 11th to discuss our portion of the master plan, our contribution to it. So be on the lookout. Please join us if you have opinions. Also today, Kevin and I sat through a meeting with the rail folks about the gateway project and our potential one seat ride to Manhattan. Seems many, many years off at this point due to this administration's preference on how to spend money, I suppose. So hopefully, things can be worked out to speed up the transition, make it maybe easier to get through the Newark Penn Station to other parts of the New Jersey transit system. But ultimately, everyone's trying to make an effort to recover funds and keep the project moving in a way that, that gets us our one seat ride sooner rather than later. But the current timetable, I heard, 15, 20 years still being discussed, so maybe someday.
All right, thank you. Gina?
So I attended the rescue squads meeting last Monday. They are in their new headquarters, the former West End Host Company. They vacillated well. They're grateful for the opportunity to be there and the arrangement the town has made for them. They're making little facility touches to make it their own place. And I think they're in a good place. Regarding the Board of Health, they are off for the summer, so I have no report for Board of Health.
Okay, great, Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. The Environmental Commission met on July 8th. And just a few things. They're continuing to use volunteers to help with the Carol Pejor rain garden and maintain that. People have been meeting and working with the Wallace House to help with their colonial garden plans. There was a lot of discussion about how to implement a $20,000 grant for the repair end project for the Petersburg Greenway. And we looked at some potential layouts for getting some new plantings and maybe even a beautiful flower meadow down there, which would be great. We'll hear a little bit later in our resolutions, but we presented, and, sorry, some members of the E, the commission presented the concept of the skip the stuff to the DSA, and we'll see that in our resolutions later. We've supported the Somerville High School's rain garden, and they've begun work on that. It's a big project, so take a look in the courtyard there. It's looking, coming along really well. And then some upcoming dates. The Environmental Commission will see everybody at National Night Out on August 5th. Our meeting will be August the 12th, right here at 7:00 PM. And we'll be hosting an event with the Native Plant Society of New Jersey on September the 15th. So keep an eye out for more information about that. And that would be the Environmental Commission update.
All right, thank you.
And then I have just a little bit for fire. So the fire department continues to attract more firefighters, and we'll see that on our resolutions as well, with additional volunteers. And for July, their numbers were, they responded to 51 calls. Two of them were fires in town, three fires outside of town, which brings our grand total of 378 years to, year to date calls, so.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Teresa?
Okay, so there was no Public Safety Committee meeting or Municipal Alliance and Youth Services Commission meeting this month. But, and the Library Board of Trustees meeting, excuse me, is this Thursday at 6:30 PM at the Somerville Public Library, and it is open to public. And also, I'll have a report for the next meeting. And just a couple little things about the public library. They have arts and craft programs from kids decorating their own desserts to drop in and draw class from, for teens and adults. And a lot of other wonderful programs. Space is limited, so please register online or in person before you go.
Great, all right. Roger?
I have no report.
Okay, all right. We have one item up for discussion, which is a ladder truck purchase and sale of existing equipment. And we began this, this discussion at our last meeting, and council felt they needed a bit more information, which we did receive, so. Roger?
I'm gonna kick it over to Glenn.
All right, Glenn.
All right, so we started the discussion at our last meeting. The fire chiefs had come to us back in April. And the council had approved a letter of intent to look into purchasing a new apparatus. This quint would be a 75 foot ladder, as well as a pumper, and would hopefully replace engine four. And then Kevin has provided us some more numbers. I don't know what, if you want me to go through as to...
Probably a good idea, just to kind of ballpark, so that the public can understand.
So the, as far as, well, even, actually, maybe even before that. I always like to think of things as like an analogy. And so the fire chiefs came without, came to us reviewing the equipment, looking at the long term needs of the borough. And one of the things that's happened is that it, there's a lag time in getting trucks and equipment and apparatus. And it can take anywhere from three to more years to do so. So engine four was set in motion almost 10 years ago, and then was actually purchased, I believe in 2018, and came online for us. However, the needs of the borough in those 10 years now have dramatically changed, as we just saw from a project that was just presented for us. So the analogy I have that made me sort of make sense of all this, and, you know, we still owe some money on engine four, so we would need to pay that off and figure out how to do that and to purchase a new equipment. I was thinking, you know, okay, you have a family, you have one child, you have a small car, like a Mini Cooper. And you're like, oh, that's great, we plan on maybe having one more kid, but that's, you know, that's it. Then you end up with twins. Now all of a sudden, your Mini Cooper isn't looking so functional anymore for that family. So you, you might not have it paid off. Ideally, you would love to have it paid off, but you don't. But you might still need a bigger car. You need a car that's more functional. So you might have to turn that Mini Cooper in and buy something a little bit bigger. That's how I see this quint functioning as far as our town goes and borough goes. Is that the functionality of engine four just isn't enough. It's, it's longer, it's harder to maneuver. The quint would give us way more versatility in having a ladder pumper combo, as well as being able to deal with if the other ladder truck was not able to get to certain places. So that's kind of the background, and that's how I made sense out of this request and trying to look at how these things were going. So Kevin ran some numbers for us. Kevin, you want, the 15 years, the more accurate one that you want me to go through, or you want me to go through all of them?
Correct, the 15 years would be probably the most accurate.
So as I said, in April, we had a resolution asking for absolute fire protection as far as looking into this. And now we have some of our numbers. So it's about, it's a million 400,749, 1.4 mil, how about that? And for absolute fire protection, they have the, the apparatus right now. Right now, the truck trade in would be at about $400,000, which brings it down to just a little over a million. We would have $20,000 in fees, and then we would have to finance that additional amount at 3.95%, which would bring a monthly payment of just over $8,000. And so that, we also had looked at possibly trying to sell engine four, which might be a little bit more than the 400,000. But that has, we don't have those specific numbers for a specific buyer right now.
Okay, I think that was very concise. Perfect. So, so that's leading to a discussion, obviously, at the council on whether the timing is appropriate or not to begin to move forward with this type of purchase. We have an existing vehicle that is about, it was put in service in 2017. So it's about eight years, eight years in use. And there is an, I'll call it an opportunity buy for a piece of equipment that is, I guess, 24 or 25? 24. Which the chiefs feel fits the needs of the municipality better than, than the existing piece of equipment. So really, the, the discussion for council is, how do you feel? It's, it's an expenditure that I think was not expected, coming on the heels of the, the emergency services complex. Understandably, town is beginning to change, so it really is a discussion for council to say, yes, we would like to move forward with this, or no, the, you know, it's, it's a bit of money and the piece of equipment has not seen, you know, even its, its half life yet. So that's really the discussion before council. So I'll open it up to council.
Well, I, I always appreciate the work of our first responders, fire department rescue squad. Fiscally, I look at this a little differently. I say, do we have a need versus a want? The fiscal process is not being followed in terms of budget hearing, putting in our budget, going through the process. And I'm also looking at potential overruns, or I don't think potential, I think there are going to be further overrun costs of the emergency services facility. So we're investing a lot more money to, to, to that facility that we didn't plan on. And then I say, yes, is this the best timing, as the mayor said? Can we afford it? Yes. Well, will it be other, better deals? Maybe. Do, are we gonna get the true value of the fire truck on a sale versus a trade in? So we would get better value, I think, on a sale versus a trade in. And I've, I've heard that we had it sold, but, but now it's not sold, so there's been a lot of back and forth on this. I, I think we've done some good research on it, and these are the questions I raise. Again, I, I think the community, you know, definitely has changed. I, I mean, I've heard that the ladder truck is functional. Maybe it's not ideal to get in tight spaces. Will it suffice? Do we get good community support from other local departments in the area? I, I think so. So I'm a little bit torn as to what the right thing to do is. And I tried to make my pro con list and, and make the best decision that there is for the, for the community. So that, that's my thoughts right now.
We gotta go one by one, but we have to give them a, an indication as to, you know, what direction we want to go financially. So that if it is moving forward, Kevin can begin to put wheels in motion, no, no pun intended. And if it's not, they understand that and, and have to figure out how to, how to move forward with the equipment we have, so.
Can they address some of the concerns raised by?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, just make sure your microphones are on.
Chief Joseph Slightly from the Somerville Fire Department. This process actually began here at the board back in November of '24. And it was brought up at our January 9th budget meeting as well. We do have records of all of that, and it was, has been provided through emails. But the town, like I said before, the previous meeting, that the town is changing, the town is adapting, and we must also adapt as a fire department for that. We do, this time, have Assistant Chief Brian Suponis with us, who is also the chief of the hook and ladder company. So I'll let him touch base on some of your concerns or questions that you guys may have as well.
Just to address the, the use of our current ladder truck. This year, it will be 20 years old. The ladder truck itself is perfectly serviceable, but the lifespan on any vehicle that long, obviously, as time goes on, it starts to fade and there starts to become little problems. And we, as a department, are looking at how to, A, extend that life and what the next steps are. And as previously spoken about, the lifespan of any vehicle is about 20 to 25 years, and the build time is anywhere between three to five. So the process, whether or not we start at this very moment, there's still that lag time in which we absolutely have to have a ladder truck in this community. We just, we just sat through a presentation about another mid-rise building, large scale building in this community. The thought process from the chiefs has absolutely been very strategic, oriented towards how this borough is changing and what the needs are. And we looked at it, not just from our own perspective, but we asked experts within our department, people who've been on paid fire departments within urban cities in this state, to basically shoot holes in what we're looking at. And obviously, in a perfect world situation, we would have no issues with budget. We would have no issues with getting any equipment that we needed, nor would have any issue with manpower. However, at a bare minimum, having an apparatus like this gives us optionality that we wouldn't necessarily have before, because of the fact that it provides us with a second ladder that we would now have, in case our ladder goes out of service, which does happen from time to time, even just for routine maintenance. And likewise, gives us the ability to also pump, which our current ladder does not, because it is actually a truck. So this gives us basically what amounts to an engine and a truck. Now, it is a 75 foot ladder, which is smaller than other ladders than the current ladder that we have, and it's smaller than a 100 foot ladder. However, a 75 foot ladder is better than the zero foot ladders on top of any of the engines that we currently have. As it stands now, it's not that engine four is not a good piece of equipment, but it isn't good for us. And there are reasons behind that, that it's simply not usable for what this borough needs. It is too... It is too big. We are taking a pivot as a leadership team to try to make this department more dynamic. Now, it's understood about the cost. In this case, we are actually getting a deal on a ladder truck, a new uh, hook-and-ladder truck, whether it be a tower ladder, whether it be a straight stick, or whether it be another tillered aerial, is anywhere between two-point-five and three million dollars. And that is with a build. Those prices will never go down. At best, we can hope they remain where they are. So we took this opportunity, when we saw one, to basically, as leadership, something that we all came through together, something that fits within this department's five-year plan, to go out and do something immediately that we see can both benefit the borough and the department, make us more dynamic, make us more useful, and more or less, serve the needs of our community. I hope I answered all of your questions, Chief. The, the ladder, uh, the ladder truck that we have now can get everywhere. The problem is, is it's age. A tillered aerial, one of the benefits of the tillered aerial is it can get anywhere. Now, it does not have a pump, so one of the differences is it, it's the pump. And the second thing that the tillered aerial does have, it's one hundred foot compared to seventy-five feet. So there is a difference in that. There is no pump. This one would have over one thousand feet of hose. So it's basically, you're getting the benefits of an engine and a truck within one vehicle. And it just makes us more dynamic, more useful, serves the mission better.
I, I, I've heard it, I understand it, but I think, again, I have the financial concerns, and then also, I, I understood before that you don't want to sell the ladder truck, you want to refurbish it. So we're gonna get rid of a two thousand eighteen truck, but keep an older truck and spend money to refurbish it. So that part I didn't quite understand either.
Allow, allow me to answer that. They are two completely separate vehicles with two completely separate missions. An engine provides water to the fire, whereas a ladder truck just has no water whatsoever, and is basically a gigantic toolbox with ladders. So it's not as though we could say, I'd like to turn Engine Four into a ladder, it's impossible, we can't do that. We have a ladder truck. This gives us the ability to have both a ladder truck and an engine in one vehicle. It's not as though, it's not as though I could take one and replace it with the other. I understand exactly where you're coming from, but there, it's, it's apples to oranges.
So we'll have two ladder trucks?
Yes. This is not meant to be a replacement, it's meant to be, it's meant to supplement.
Other questions? Comments?
I too have some concerns over the finances and the need versus want aspect of this, but at the same time, uh, I'm hearing the arguments of the truck that you have now is not useful for the job that you're needing it to do. And also, it presents some challenges with the size of it moving around town. I'm also hearing that having two ladders is, uh, two trucks with ladders, I should say, instead of two just ladder trucks, is uh, more beneficial to us in our ability to respond to these mid-rise buildings, should they ever have fires for some reason. You know, it's, it's, it is a little difficult to make a, a decision on something looking at the, the bill of what this is and knowing that we have equipment and all of that. It's, and I'm not as close as others, members of the council are, obviously, to the knowledge that you need in order to understand exactly how you guys operate. But it sounds to me like um, being capable of having a truck show up on scene that's possibly able to do all it needs to do at one time, as opposed to needing multiple trucks, makes it easier for the fire department to show up quickly and to be responsive quickly to the needs of, of a fire, as opposed to needing to wait for a second unit to arrive, essentially, right? If you, with this truck, you'll be able to respond quicker to something, is it gonna make us safer?
Well, if I may answer your first question, and I hope, I, I want to be clear about this. This is not, th- this is not a, an argument against our current ladder truck. What it is stating is that our current ladder truck is twenty years old. The average lifespan for a ladder truck is twenty to twenty-five years before it needs to be replaced, that's just a reality. We, we understand that it has a lifespan, and the reality is, we are going to have to do something where either we replace it or we refurb it. But this is not meant to replace the ladder truck. This is meant to serve us better, to make us more dynamic. So there aren't issues with the ladder truck inasmuch as the same sorts of issues that you would have with any sort of vehicle that has wear and tear over the course of twenty years.
I meant the unit that you're looking to trade.
The one that we're currently, currently looking to trade simply does not meet the needs of the borough. It's too big, yes, exactly, and that, that's the reality.
So in the month of July, we uh, all of our drivers and operators uh, attended a CVO class, which is an emergency response, like defensive driving course. Uh, all of our apparatus were there, ladder truck, Engine One, Engine Three, and not Engine Four, because nobody's confident and comfortable driving and operating it on a training course.
Who's the driver on that?
What do you mean, the head driver?
The head driver, yeah.
That is Scotty Becker.
I, I understood that everybody had been cross-trained once we got to the new facility.
We're in the process of cross-training. Everyone has driven it in Vandevale parking lot, has pumped it. It does not mean that they are comfortable operating it out on the open roadway or responding to fires.
But we're gonna keep it, that's the part I guess I don't understand.
Engine Four?
No.
No, that's, that's Engine Four I'm talking about.
The ladder truck. Oh, so, so Engine Four is harder to drive than the ladder truck?
Absolutely.
But aren't the guys driving it the ones who spec it?
We have currently two drivers that would operate it, and most of the time it sits in the firehouse.
Who's that, Nick and Scott, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to reiterate that this was not a whimsical decision. This was something that we came together.
Yeah, no, I, I get that.
And, and I know looking at the finances can be frightening or intimidating, but I, I think the reality of the, them just being worse when we are forced to replace is, you know, ma- makes it not quite as painful to me.
I mean, we're making decisions up here that are allowing these larger, you know, buildings, and buildings do catch fire, we need to be prepared to deal with those. I mean, yes, one point four million dollars is a lot of money. One point six over the entire financing with the debt that we already have, that we still have to repay and all of that. But that's not a really big number when it comes to the cost of, you know, the safety and the things that we do spend money on sometimes, right? I mean, in perspective of things, we spend more money on other things. So uh, like, like our building that we just built for them to have all the things they need, uh, if this is one of the things we need to be safe.
Is um, so, just, so is it a separate engine? So it's just an aerial ladder? Is there any water on the ladder or no?
There's a, there's a five-hundred gallon tank of water on there. It also has uh, three uh, crosslays and a uh, a five-inch um, LDH to supply it from a hydrant to the ladder.
You're speaking a totally different language than me.
So, yeah, it'll get you big water and has a ladder and everything. So our current, our current ladder truck has no water on it whatsoever. No hoses on it, it's just a ladder, a bunch of ladders in the back, and then just a big toolbox.
But when you extend, is there water at the extension, or is it?
There is, there's water in the apparatus itself, and we can supply it to get water out the tip of that ladder.
Mr. Mayor, are you asking about our current ladder truck or the new one?
The new one.
The new one has a ladder pipe.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, with the um, volunteerism going down nationally, not just in Somerville, just nationally, it is harder to get volunteers. And this piece rolling out the door would allow one piece of apparatus in the time that we have limited manpower, or if we're out on a mutual aid call, to respond and still protect our residents and our patrons of this town.
Do you need someone on the ladder to operate the water?
No, you could operate it all from the pump panel on the side.
Same as our current ladder truck.
If I may, I came into the meeting after seeing the numbers and thought, as much as I wanted to keep Somerville safe, the numbers were just making me nervous, you know, to have such a high payment. But after hearing you tonight, I am leaning more towards supporting your goal. So, that's all I have to say.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right, so let's do this. So that everybody has some sense of direction, we can do one of two things. We can either defer and make a decision at the next meeting, or somebody can make a motion right now to, to either yea or nay on this and, and move, move forward or, well, either way, you're moving forward, with, with, with the vehicle or not, so.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing is, is, and, and uh, the chief has met with me as well. We are under a, a radio mandate to buy new radios, and we, that's been talked about, and we, that we're moving forward with that. We're expecting to do that um, financing-wise in August. So um, i- i- if it is the council's decision to move forward with it, we'd love to lump everything together. It would just save us some, it, it wouldn't be a lo- large cost, but it would save us some money.
Bonding costs, yeah.
Yeah, we'd be doing both projects through the Improvement Authority. But that would be our plan, so just giving an idea of time-wise of what, what would help us from just a financial administrative side, if it was done together, it would probably help us out.
All right, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to uh, bring it to a vote, whether we should move forward with the financing of this truck.
Second.
Discussion. This is a, a vote to support moving forward with this. All right, right?
Yep, that was the motion.
Confusion?
So we're, we're voting on yes or no, whether we're gonna buy it or not?
Wha- whether you're gonna, whether you're gonna begin moving forward, giving Kevin the authority to begin that process.
To purchase it.
Which means to purchase it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Banner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Deney?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
abstain.
And Roger Vroom?
Yes.
The, I guess the only caveat is, is maybe you can, we can clear this up now too with the existing uh, Engine Four, how would you like to proceed? What, one of the thoughts I had was to get in front of you, and I've discussed this with both Councilman Vroom and the chief prior, was potentially uh, maybe not doing that as the trade and having an opportunity to put it in the open market, a little more aggressive than we have. So I gue- I guess the question is, is, and, and it may, you know, to s- to put it on the market where it would have like a six-hundred-thousand-dollar minimum, which would be over the four hundred that we're getting in a trade, right? To see if there's an opportunity to do that and, and uh,
I, I think that's an administrative decision on your part, I think, and I think that's the appropriate way to go.
But except for the governing body does have to wa- does have to authorize an auction of that. And if they do that, um, normally, we have a resolution on the agenda to do that, but if that's something you want to do, we can process that and, and memorialize that in a resolution at the next meeting.
Yes.
Which gives a little window um, to see, um, because if, if it's sitting in the firehouse, you know, to some extent, for the, I, I don't see, if we were to get a, a good market for that, you can just sell it, right? Because it's not doing them any goo- real good at this particular point, and then you could just finance the entire one point fo- four-seven, which would be a savings of about two-hundred-thousand dollars. And if there is no market for it, then it goes with the trade.
Yes.
If that's okay.
I think that's appropriate.
It's more palatable to me, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, at this point, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Banner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Deney?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
All right, uh, public session is now open, please state your name and address for the record, and please address your comments to me. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dennis Sullivan, Eight South Richards Avenue, and as I always do, I tell you what hat I'm wearing, so I'll wear two hats first. Former mayor. The project that you were presented tonight actually spans six mayors. You, you may or may not remember the ill-fated Meadow Street development under the auspices of then-mayor Mike Kerwin. The east end of Somerville's been the stepchild forever. And the fact that someone has accumulated seven properties, is willing to make a substantial investment in the town, and actually listened to the various boards with which they met, is very encouraging. Again, what you saw tonight is just a concept, it's going to change and probably get better. But I, I can't be more excited. Being an East Ender myself, um, it's, it's always been the dream of God rest his soul, Bernie Novato.
Yep.
And uh, if and when this project's built, I'd like to see some recognition of Bernie in that public space for, for a later date. So I'm, I'm all in favor. Let's just make it the best it can be. And then we'll move the eastern end of Somerville all the way to Adamsville Road, because it shouldn't stop at that's, it shouldn't stop at Gaston Avenue, it should continue all the way to the eastern border. So I wish you luck in, in bringing this forward. Myself and the, the five mayors that preceded me will, will be forever in your debt, as will the, the public of, of Somerville. Now, I'll put on my homeowner hat. Got my uh, Christmas greeting from the borough the other day in the form of the annual tax bill. And uh, unlike most people, I actually look at it, go beyond the little box at the bottom, and I just want to give you a quick summary. And this is my particular tax, I'm at about eighty-five percent of the average, so my numbers will be a little bit less. The borough increase this year is a whopping eight tenths of one percent, or twenty-three dollars for the year. Somerset County, on Grove Street, uh, increase of eighty-six dollars, seven-point-three percent, or roughly nine times the borough increase. And the Board of Education, fifty-one West Cliff Street, an increase of one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars, or three and a half percent. Again, about six times the borough rate. But more significantly, I think, is the share of the taxes. If you cut the pie up, the borough share went down almost one percent. That's a great trend, and I commend the council, you know, for that effort. The county share went up a, a point, so it's a bigger share. And the school, of course, went up about one percent. So if and when taxpayers come to you asking questions about their taxes, I would send them to fifty-one West Cliff Street and to twenty Grove Street with their questions. I send you seven dollars and thirteen cents a day in municipal taxes. Thank you for respecting my money.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, those, those comments are few and far between, so, as you well know, so thank you, we appreciate that very much, thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Banner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Deney?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
All right, uh, ordinances for introduction, number twenty-seven sixty-seven is amending ordinance number twenty-six sixty-one, as noted, authorizing and encouraging electric vehicle supply service equipment, EVSE, and make-ready parking spaces in creating chapter one-oh-seven dash one-seventeen M entitled Electric Vehicle Supply Service Equipment and Make-Ready Parking Space Regulations. I've asked Mike Cole, uh, the borough planner, to uh, to kind of give us an overview of this. Uh, Mike, if you want to come up front? The planning board took great pains on this. Obviously, as, as this country, this world moves more towards electric vehicles and electric vehicle parking and charging, there are those unintended consequences that come with it, uh, namely fires. And uh, we heard a little bit of that uh, tonight and uh, and the efforts to try to reduce the exposure of those potential fires. Uh, the planning board took a while uh, in going through this, and we vetted a, a lot of different scenarios and came up with what we think is a very uh, useful, safe approach uh, to, to EV parking and charging. So Mike, if you would, give us an overview?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the overview is that we added, the proposal from the planning board to the council is to add more detail to the existing res- uh, ordinance, and breaks it up into four scenarios, which you have the surface parking, the homeowners, the townhomes, and the structured parking. You have uh, free and clear versus a mixed juice deck, and you see the caveats there. And it gives the development, community developers out there some guidance for what the borough is looking for. And it's all about trying to enhance public safety. So uh, there is the mixed juice deck, which has apartments that are retail above, is prohibited. But again, you s- the rationale is there, and if a developer has a compelling need, they would go to the planning board and seek a variance for that, it would be a C variance. So it's, it's down as prohibited, but there is a mechanism in municipal land use law to address that. So you have the four scenarios, the surface parking lot, uh, which was kind of where, I don't want to speak for the fire marshal, but where the Board of Engineers and the fire marshal would like to see this, the parking to get it away from structures. But there's acknowledgement from the planning board that that's not always possible. So you have the surface parking lot, putting a fire hydrant, keeping it away from structures. And then you have the, uh, IRC, the Individual International Residential Code, requires a receptacle you put in the new townhomes, uh, by code, so it encourages them to put that receptacle for level two charging near the garage doors to encourage charging outside the structure. And then we have the mixed, uh, the, the decks, and you have the caveats on there, a one and two story. Uh, basically, if you have like the deck the county has, we have a party wall, that's considering a single use deck. So there's some nuances in there about, uh, what's allowed and what's not on the, on the, on the decks. So I can go into more detail, but overall, it's just to give guidance to the community. And there's a, there's a relief mechanism built in into the situation, being an app, a developer could come and say, "I can't do this for X, Y, and Z," and they can seek relief and demonstrate in front of the planning board.
Yeah, thi- this is a, an outgrowth of, uh, actually the project right here, the, the last phase of the project here. Um, and, and the, the hesitancy of the planning board, uh, and, and the hesitancy of the fire department and the fire official to, uh, to, to allow parking EV charging, uh, underneath a residential structure. It just creates a lot of issues and a lot of problems. So the planning board looked at this and said, you know, we, we've got to define what would be acceptable, because the world is moving that way, and, and we have to figure out how we can marry the two. And, uh, and we think we've done a good job with this. The, uh, fire official has reviewed this, he's good with it. Um, so, uh, the planning board, uh, sent it up to, uh, up to the council for review and introduction, and hopefully adoption. So that's where we're at.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So looking at the plan that was presented tonight, the part, the EV charging is proposed for the lower deck, and there's a deck above it, but then there's apartments above that second deck. So would that not fit with?
That would need a, I guess, councilman, that would need a variance.
Okay.
From where it stands. The, I, what the Board of Engineers and the Fire Marshal expresses, they want the charging on the top open to try to dissipate, and my, this is me spitballing here, dissipate some of the heat, that if you have an EV fire, it's 4,000 or 5,000 degrees, and they don't want it in a confined space. That's the thinking behind that. But if there's mechanisms that can demonstrate that it's, it's safe with the proposing, I'm sure the planning board will entertain that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah. Uh, I'm looking at what the regulations are around the parking structures here, and obviously nobody wants, uh, electric vehicle fire to cause, uh, fire in a residence or destroy somebody's business or anything like that. But, uh, especially, you know, item, first and foremost, I also think, uh, we refer to letters in here, and there are no letters, so, uh, at the least, the next revision of this should make sure that there are letters, not numbers, uh, for each section. But, um, what's right now, 5D on single use parking structures, uh, talking about heat resistant coating, some type of ceramics from aerospace industries, are we not driving up the cost of this and/or potentially just creating an oven-like effect by creating such a, a space where the heat has nowhere to dissipate? Um, and if it's on the top of a structure also, um, doesn't that make it more difficult for our fire apparatus to then, uh, deal with it? I mean, and somebody's got to run up there with a hose, or we got to get the ladder truck out there. And as you hear, as of right now, we only have one for the time being. Um, so my concern being just, uh, the recommendations or the language here about having them on the top deck and that they require additional heat resistant coating, which will drive up the, the cost. I mean, I'm not known for concrete to burn. In fact, if you want to separate these things with a concrete wall so that one fire in one parking stall doesn't cause a fire in the other. Um, another idea that I think, you know, you have a standpipe listed here, but, uh, we don't have anything about sprinklers above the parking spaces. Uh, if they're on the first floor where they can be accessed easily from outside, then you could have a sprinkler system above them that could dump water on them and deluge them and put them out as best we can until they're manageable. Uh, I know these fires don't go out, right? Um, once a Tesla catches fire, it burns, you could, you could put the thing in a lake and it'll still be on fire, and I understand that point. Um, but I think some of these, uh, provisions we have in here makes it more restrictive and less likely that we're going to have electric vehicle chargers, when the intent of the original ordinance that was written, written here is to promote the adoption of electric vehicles and have more electric vehicle chargers. So it's not to say that more clarity isn't needed, and I'm certain that developers deserve more, uh, specifics from us on how we expect them to do electric vehicle chargers. But the, some of the recommendations that are in here make it, um, less feasible and likely that we're going to see any electric vehicle chargers. Now, I know that there's, uh, some discussion about potentially pushing this to, to some type of municipal electric vehicle lot or some other type of privatized electric vehicle lots located somewhere else in town, which would be a wonderful thing, but doesn't exist today. And in anticipation of this going into effect, I'd hate to see it curb adoption as opposed to promote it. I know there are a lot of other things working against electric vehicles at this point in time, uh, both the lack of incentives or incentives disappearing and, uh, just some general, uh, distaste in the, in the, uh, the ethos out there. But at the same time, um, you know, we've taken the time, this council has taken the time to pass an ordinance to say that we want electric vehicles, we'd like electric vehicle charging to be included, the 15% required by the state government for, uh, for, you know, multi-family buildings. And then we're putting in some specifics here that'll make it, uh, either cost prohibitive and/or impossible to install electric vehicle chargers, uh, in the manner that we're saying in the other half of the ordinance that we'd like them to do. So just want to point out the contradictions in here. And again, I'm fully in support of making sure that we do this safely so that we don't have vehicle fires, uh, causing property damage. Uh, but at the same time, electric vehicle fires are, um, if you look at it statistically less likely than a internal combustion vehicle fire. And charging is typically not when the vehicles catch fire, it's when they are impacted. Uh, the charging, in fact, has more safety precautions to it than, than other times, because you have breakers and other things that'll shut off the electricity. It's not a fact that, uh, likely that the electric vehicle, uh, would have a problem with the charger creating a fire, would be more likely that the vehicle's poor maintenance or, um, you know, owner-operator doing something incorrectly would cause the fire. So, um, just want to, want to point out some contradictions between the intent of the original ordinance and the language here that is, uh, that is amending it. Kind of creates a more difficult scenario for us to achieve our goal that was stated originally in 2022. So, um, not so much anything you could maybe directly answer, but I wanted to make sure it was said.
Well, I, I, I will say, and, uh, Mike, you can chime in, uh, the, the planning board went through a lot of that discussion. Um, hence it took two or three meetings for us to get to that result. And one of the overarching concerns was firefighting. Um, that was really what was driving it. We're caught in this predicament of the world is going this way. New Jersey has mandated that up to, how many, 15%?
15%.
15% of the parking, um, in a site. So we had that discussion, and what we said was, the develop, it's go- it's going to force the developer to look at, uh, their project a little bit differently. Uh, meaning that putting a, uh, charging underneath their building is not going to happen. What we've discovered, and I think the FD can bear this out, is concrete can burn. Um, and, and you're seeing actual structural failures when these, when you have multiple cars go. And if it's a structural failure underneath a residential building, now we got a big problem. Um, uh, there's a whole lot of people that have a big problem. And, and so we kind of brought that into the scale, and we said, "Look, if, if there is nothing underneath," I mean, above, that makes a little more sense, so that if there is a fire, it can be managed a bit better, a little easier. And the danger to potential residential units isn't right there. So a lot of it has been calculated in. Um, you know, the idea of trying to push this out, uh, to, as, as we talked about, um, different locations, um, concentric locations, so that we can bring people to the gas station, so to speak, instead of the gas station to the individual. Um, a- and whether that's going to fly or not, we don't know. Once again, it's, it's working it through legislation. It's trying to get a hold of the political leaders and get them to say, "You know, that's not a bad idea." Um, but what it does force developers to do is to look at it differently. Now, it's not to say that if it's not in that building, can they get an adjacent piece of property and have their charging over at the adjacent piece of property? Yeah, they can. So, so it's, it's going to force them to look at things a little bit differently. It still doesn't eliminate the risk of an EV car in a lot. We can't restrict EV cars from the lots, so we still have this problem. So we're trying to mitigate the, as much as we can, so.
Mike, I just have one question. We passed this because this was a state law that was mandated, um, I forget exactly when, but a couple of years ago. Do we, with these changes, do we still meet the state requirements?
Yes. It was, uh, determined last year that the DCA and the state allows for site safety to be incorporated into the make-ready ordinance that Governor Murphy signed in. So there was clarification provided that, yes, you can do, uh, look at site safety and put reasonable restrictions to address this. And, uh, back on the issue on the concrete, as far as I'm, I'm aware of, and this came out from the Fire Marshal, every EV fire in a deck has damaged the deck to the point that it can't be used. So the, the heat of the fire will damage or can damage it, and that's why this, we're trying to protect the structure, because if you lose the deck, then where the residents or the people use, uh, is in a very tight environment, how do you repair a deck quickly? You don't. So there, there's two, there's two prongs to this, trying to protect the public, but trying to protect the structure, because you just can't flip a switch. If the deck is damaged, it's damaged for a long time. So that's going back to the, the councilman's comment about the ceramic tile, there's a night, is the intent is to try to protect the structure. That's what it's about. And that's why it's back on the, the Fire Marshal and the Board of Engineers want the charging on the top. And I agree that the chargers are UL rated, but the concern is that if you have a damaged battery, that the charging may cause a thermal runaway and cause the battery to ignite. So it's not really the chargers that's, that was the concern of the planning board. It is charging a damaged battery, which would, would be the catalyst to have this, uh, EV fire.
I do have one other question, though. We have, uh, here that you can have them at gas stations with no restrictions on their distance from the tanks. Are we not concerned, the same thing, about a potential catastrophe of a, you know, electric vehicle fire causing a gas tank to explode at a gas station? If that's, you know, if we're going to allow them there? I mean, uh, if we're going to do this for the public safety and structured safety of property, then let's do it. Uh, let's, let's not just single out a few different structures where it might be problematic. Let's, let's address all of them where it will be problematic. So, um, you know, people can have it within five feet of their homes, but we're not going to allow it in a developer's parking deck. You know, there's, um, I just want to make sure that when we address this, we address it all the way across the board and not just single out a few different solutions. So, uh, I understand, and I'm, I'm hoping that we can come to a resolution of some of these other discussions on how we can get more electric vehicle charging still brought to town. Um, but I don't want to see us, um, you know, cut off our nose to spider face on this one. I, I definitely think it's, it's somewhere we're going, we're going to need them, residents are going to want them. I mean, we also need somebody to check on people who just lay them across, uh, uh, park, you know, sidewalks at this point, because that's starting to happen around town. I don't, it's not a frequent thing, but I, I am beginning to notice it when I walk my dog at night. But I just want to put it, point it out, that if we're going to be concerned about property in public, then let's be concerned about all properties in public. So I'd hate to have a scenario where an electric vehicle fire becomes a much larger fire, if that's what we're trying to concern, uh, concern ourselves with, and we kind of missed that one on this revision, uh, when it comes to gas stations or, or other places where it could be. So, um, it'd be great to see a, a version of this that addresses that as well, so it's more comprehensive, as opposed to simply singling out, you know, what is unfortunately becoming one of our, uh, more common places of parking in downtown.
I do want to jump in and, and just say that we're, this is across the board, this isn't new developments that we're looking at, and this certainly is for folks that are looking to possibly build. I'm on, it's just very, very quiet, which normally is not a problem for me. Um, th- this is not to, uh, this is not just for developments, this is for, uh, any of our parking structures in the borough. Uh, so whether it be, uh, the parking lot on, on veterans, or it be the one behind, near the post office, all of those decks that we currently have, these are considerations that we want those owners to have. We're not, a- and that's the spirit of it even with the planning board, and since I said on the planning board, I, I just want to throw it out there, no one is trying to dissuade, uh, meeting the 15%, which is what we, the biggest thing that we've been wrangling with, which is why there are variances and, and things of those nature. Um, but what we are trying to do is we're trying, as, as was said before, to make a conscious decision about where it is. So it's not, it's not trying to hinder, um, you know, folks buying them and charging them. Um, I, it's about making it so that people think about where they're putting them. Because if you go, one of, one of the people on the planning board said very clearly, "Go to Wawa over, over in the Fender Inn section of Bridgewater at any time during the day, and you will find, if not all of those stalls packed, there will be a line waiting for those stalls." So having charging locations brings in electric vehicles. The charging systems are certainly very sophisticated at this point, um, but there are folks who, you know, we just had a flood in, in North Plainfield, South Plainfield, Plainfield. They could have driven through those waters, I can drive through it, I don't have an internal combustion car, my car's not being choked out, um, because of the exhaust, they go to charge that. They don't realize now that even though that car's not capable, shouldn't be doing that, uh, may have caused some damage. So you don't think about these things, and I think there's a learning gap, um, even with folks who own them and, and folks who are looking to purchase them. Uh, not to say that, that we can prevent all of that, but at least it brings it so that where we have them, the borough has thought about it, and it, it makes it so that we're trying to say, "We get it, we want you to have them, but be thoughtful about where you put them."
Perfect. All right. Public comment on, uh, on 2767. Hearing none, um, I will ask for a motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dunne?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, 2768 is amending ordinance 2733 as noted, alcoholic beverages, Article 1, Licensing Regulation, Section 7, Fee Subsection, uh, A. Kevin, I'm assuming this is just, uh, updating the fees?
Uh, that's correct, starting, uh, July of next year.
Okay. All right. Um, public comment on 2768. Hearing none, we'll close. 2768 comment, and I will ask for a motion for introduction. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, is this raising the value or costs, or these numbers going up or down?
Uh, it, the, the numbers that are allowable to go up, uh, went up, so, which was the annual fee for, to hold a license.
Okay. And, uh, just because I don't know, how many, do we, do we have any open licenses in town? Do we just create them when people ask for them? I'm, I think we have a limited number, right?
Uh, it's, 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 uh, calculated by population, but the borough of Somerville does not own any licenses.
Right.
There are currently two that are in pocket, they're privately owned, and they could be sold by those two owners.
Got it.
Uh, further discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Theresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dunne?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Vroom?
Yes.
Okay. Orders for public hearing and adoption, number 2766 is amending chapter 1024 of the Borough Land Use and Development Code, Article 2, entitled Definitions, Section D, Creating a Definition of Deck and Identifying the Improvement Coverage for Decks. Um, this is a, a simple fix for, uh, a number of folks who have tried to put in decks. Uh, it just creates a 10-foot by 10-foot area that's ex- excluding the impervious coverage. Uh, it allows for a 10-foot by 10-foot. If the deck goes above ten-foot-by-ten-foot, it then must comply with impervious coverage over and above that that hundred square feet. I'll ask for a motion for the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay, public hearing on twenty-seven sixty-eight is now open. Oh, sorry, twenty-seven sixty-six. My bad. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay, motion for adoption on twenty-seven sixty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay, consent resolutions. I'm going to pull one ninety-seven. I just want to make a couple of comments. Any others to be pulled off? Okay. One ninety-five is authorizing a purchase of a twenty-twenty-four F-150 police responder, four by four, as noted. One ninety-six is approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey DOT, twenty-twenty-six Transit Village Grant Program for Veterans Memorial Drive Enhanced Pedestrians Crossings and EV Charging Stations. One ninety-eight is approving a street closure on Grove Street for Somerset Superior Court, nine eight of four P on Wednesday, July twenty-third. One ninety-nine, accepting the twenty-four municipal audit and execution of the group affidavit certifying the general comments and recommendations made by the auditor has been reviewed. Two hundred, authorizing the purchase of lighting package through East Coast Emergency Lighting under New Jersey State Contract for the total amount of twelve thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Two oh one, executing a contract with First Due Software for Somerville and Raritan Borough and hosting contract for Raritan Borough. Two oh two is acknowledging automatic renewal of twenty-six dash twenty-eight cooperative agreements regarding community development block grant and home investment partnership program activities. Two oh three is approving chapter one fifty-nine from the National Opioid Settlement Trust. Two oh four, authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for T and M Associates to perform professional services with Veterans Park Pickleball Court improvements. Two oh five, accepting the resignation of Darius Hernandez effective July nineteen and of business July eighteen. Two oh six is amending a shared services agreement by and between the borough of Raritan and the borough of Somerville for property maintenance enforcement officer services and authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute said agreement. Two oh seven, authorizing the borough of Somerville to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Blue Acres Program for one twenty-three Davenport Street. Two oh eight is approving Somerville Fire Department application for Nicole Fox. Two oh nine is approving the hiring of lifeguards for twenty-twenty-five pool season. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitt. I'm sorry, Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay, one ninety-seven is support skip the stuff to discourage the distribution of plastic single-use food service items and non-plastic single-use food service items for takeout or delivery orders unless requested by a customer. This is an opt-in program. We have Sandy Ben Skoder here, who has been a champion of this and been working very hard. And I know you have, and we thank you. She was sure to make mention to us that this is an opt-in program that the restaurants can use if they so desire to try to to limit the use of plastic disposable utensils. So any other comments you want to make to that? All right, I'll make a motion for, sorry, I'll ask for a motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
And it's not introduction. Okay, sorry. Discussion.
I appreciate the time that the Environmental Commission put into this, and I I think it's important as a public statement that that we make consumers aware of good environmental practices. So thank you for your hard work on this, as well as your your team.
Roll call.
I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a question. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Is the Environmental Commission going to be working with the local businesses in any way to help them make their customers aware? Yeah. Okay, I was, that was it, that was it?
But Teresa, they did already go to all the businesses.
Okay, that was it, yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that all the the businesses are aware and that, you know. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, bills or vouchers, Roger?
I make a motion to pay bills and vouchers in the amount of one million six hundred forty-two thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Stereo.
Who was that? Roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts. I'm sorry. Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne. It's getting late.
All right, and Mr. Deney, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.